Good evening and welcome to a special meeting of the Sacramento City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll, excuse me, to estab-- I'm sorry, to establish a quorum?
Councilmember Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Guerra.
Here.
Councilmember Sneer.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Here. Very good. We have a quorum. Well, let's do the pledge of allegiance again for the evening, and this time I would ask Councilmember Jennings to please lead us. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Before we get to tonight's main event, we have another main event, and that is a presentation recognizing a very big day in Sacramento, coincidentally is known as the Big Day of Giving. And I'd like to ask Marty Steiner, who chairs the--
Community Foundation.
Community Foundation.
Sacramento Region Community Foundation.
The Region Community Foundation, to please come up, and we welcome you, and please invite up the leaders here, and tell us a little bit about what's happening this Thursday.
I appreciate it. Yeah, before I get into it, so I do have kind of a representative breadth of, we've got 601, we're very excited, we've broached the 600 mark, we've got 601 nonprofits with detailed information on every one of them, which is very exciting. But let me just, as a sampling here, we've got folks here who've never been up on the dais, so they're gonna let me talk. But we've got Girls Rock Sacramento, Larissa, there we are here, and we've got Stephanie from Children's Law Center of California.
Everybody.
You can come up, they won't bite.
[laughter]
We've got, is it Clarissa from the National Coalition of 100 Black Women Sacramento Chapter, CAKO from the Gender Health Center, and is Renato from Improve Your Tomorrow here? Come join me. These are the kind of groups who have spent months in our bootcamps and our trainings, and it's very exciting. You've been looking at numbers all day today, so I won't bore you with too many. Our first effort, seven years ago, we did kind of a test pilot project with the arts community, and we raised a half a million dollars, and that was great. Over the next five years after that, we've successfully raised $30 million into our nonprofits, and with last year being $7 million. Of that, which I think you recognize, the Sacramento community is very generous. Almost a quarter of that $30 million, we're a region community foundation, we serve Yolo, Placer, El Dorado, and Sacramento. But roughly a quarter of that $30 million over the last six years has been generated by the citizens of Sacramento. You know, the same citizens who voted your Measure U, which is causing you grief because now you've got, you know, resources that you have to decide how to allocate, these are the people who support our nonprofits. And it's the nonprofits that are really, you know, adding to that vitality and that inclusiveness that we hope to achieve. The other thing that I just would like to point out, I've been, I was fortunate enough to get on this board when we first started this effort, and what's really been exciting is to see how the nonprofits work together. We have bootcamps, we start in October, you know, teaching how we can help the nonprofits be more aggressive and assertive, and getting their stories out, because it's those stories that connect people to the giving. And it's a very exciting day. Thursday, starting at midnight, we'll be there watching the returns, and it's exciting to give, it's exciting to watch that, but it's also exciting to see the nonprofits working together, collaborating, and then watching nonprofits who started earlier, they mentor these nonprofits coming in. So we thank you very much tonight in recognizing the significance of this day, and we hope to continue to build on the success we've had and the support that this community has brought to this, so.
And the message to the community for Thursday is?
Is give, give often, and give big. Thank you very much, Councilman.
Thank you so much, Marty. Thank you to all of you as leaders. I know Rick Jennings would like to make a comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. I want to thank you and all the organizations that are here, but I also want to thank the Region Foundation for their incredible work over the years. My organization has had the opportunity to participate in the Big Day of Giving. It gets really, really competitive, and so what I encourage the public to do is to take a look at the, how many, 601 now?
601 now.
So take a look at the 601 organizations throughout the city of Sacramento that are doing incredible work, and find something that you're passionate about that you can give to those organizations. And they're not asking for a whole lot. As a matter of fact, you can pick 10 of them, and you can give a small amount to 10, or you can give a large amount to just one or two. But they are looking to bring in additional funds that they can utilize to continue the services that they're doing in the community. So I wanted to thank Region Foundation for their work. I wanted to thank all the nonprofits that are out there that are counting on this Big Day of Giving, that will bring in additional funds for the work that they do every single day, and I want to thank each one of you for being here tonight.
I will definitely pass your thanks along to the board and to our staff.
And we did have this beginning of a debate today about our city budget, Measure U and all this, and one thing that I think we would all agree on, we can't do anything alone. We need our nonprofits, we need our community and its resources and the people to contribute to all these vital causes, because it's only in partnership that we're going to be able to realize our city's dreams, and thank you.
Thank you again for recognizing us tonight.
Look forward to being out there on Thursday. Okay.
Watch the leaderboard on Thursday, and watch it fly.
What's the goal?
Well, you know, I'd always love to grow bigger, so, you know, 7.5 million would be a nice number to hit, but even more would be better. We've got some good momentum going. We've got a new team and a new strategy.
It shall be so.
We've got some excitement here.
I do not have 7.5 million, but what I do have is a city resolution.
Oh, very good.
Which I would be happy to provide to you, and any member who would like to join me, you're welcome to come on down.
Do we have CNN or other photographers?
You've got enough pictures on you.
All right, come on down for the picture. Somebody's got to take a picture around here. Come on. Here we go. Here we go.
We're good. We can put this guy in.
Yeah.
Here we go. Very good. Come on in, everybody.
Okay, I was gonna kick you out at 6:30.
That's great. Thank you.
Good luck on Thursday, huh?
Thank you. Thank you. It's already started. Our little goal meeting's going out.
Excellent.
Good job. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I said hello.
I should, yeah.
I missed her, she was coming down.
Oh, okay.
All right. We do have a consent calendar with one item, actually. Do we have any public testimony on the consent calendar, madam?
I do. I have three speakers on this item. First is William Berg, Kayla Scott, and then Julie Raju.
This is around the loan agreement for the Capital Park Hotel. Please.
Thank you. William Berg, Central City Resident Preservation Sacramento. We reached out to Mercy Housing when the long-term program for this building was announced, and they gave us a tour of the building and met with our board, and our board voted to support the long-term project of reconversion, essentially rehabbing this building for long-term affordable housing that would physically rehab the building, because our conclusion in touring the building was that it's a beautiful historic building, but it's in very rough shape and needs some serious work. And if it is not restored, then we risk losing the housing for the people who live there permanently, but also losing an architectural landmark. And so the long-term project will do both. It will keep the building with us for another century and maintain it in its long-term role as affordable housing. There's an assumption very often that historic preservation is about the mansions of the wealthy. That is not the case in the 21st century. It is about all of us, and this building played an important role that hopefully it will continue to play. And what I encourage those, for the members of the council who are still seeking sites, not only for shelters in your districts, but also for affordable housing, to look at the opportunities of historic properties within your district, or even just older buildings, and their potential for reuse. The old saying that new ideas need old buildings. The kind of housing crisis we're in demands new ideas, and it requires old buildings that can facilitate housing in the short term using the shelter model, and then long-term permanent supportive affordable housing. I hope you'll support this and move forward with it as well as the long-term project. Thank you very much for your talk.
Thank you, sir.
Kayla Scott, and then Julie Raju.
Hello, City Council, Mayor. My name is Kayla Scott. I'm a rehousing case manager. I work with the homeless in the River District, and I oppose the Capital Park Hotels solely because SROs is usually our best friends, because they provide a resource that's very similar to what they're trying to pursue, which is market housing. And one of the jobs that I have as a rehousing case manager is that I am looking to reduce those barriers that prevent them from qualifying for market housing. So I need something that's very similar to what they are trying to pursue. And I was a little bit discouraged by the questions that were answered during the last meeting, because there was no criteria, and I think that's really important, because that helps us understand how we can address our clients the best. So like, specific needs that they need to address, such as like the barriers. So when I refer to barriers, I mean like evictions, credit report issues. They may not know how to, you know, sign a lease, drug addictions, but so much more of it being a utility because of them being homeless. Those things can make it really difficult for us to do our job, and we need to be able to reduce those things. And I don't see how us not having a criteria for the Capital Park Hotel and SHRA specifically, you know, producing that, is going to help with us doing our job, if that makes any sense. So I would like for us to put that money towards other resources, such as second chance leasing, halfway houses for ex-offenders, if we could create halfway houses for juvenile delinquents, I would suggest subsidies for employment-based tendencies like chicory, anything that would help us do our job, you know, better, if possible.
Thank you for your comments. Your two minutes is complete.
Thank you.
And our last speaker is Julie Raju.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Julie Raju. The reason I'm opposing the Capital Park Hotel is because it's going to displace some of the senior citizens that have chronic illnesses. Imagine yourself being 60, 70, 80, 90 years old, and thinking that this is your resident where you're going to be, and now you're going to be displaced as a homeless person. I understand that SHRA and Councilmember Hanson, you made a quote that stated that you would ensure that they would have permanent, stable housing. Will that be affordable housing at the rate that they're paying on a fixed income currently, which is about $575 or so? That's a huge concern of mine, that in order to do transitional housing, that we're displacing other constituents that are no longer considered possibly as a voting class, and putting them out in the street. What is being considered to support our elders in our community that has been a part of this community and continues to be? Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Councilmember Hanson.
Thanks, Mayor. I would like to move the item, but I would like to address those last couple points. First of all, this building is going to be converted to permanent supportive housing, which is restricted affordable housing for those who are formerly homeless. That is going to happen regardless of what we do, and those residents who are there, because it is substandard, as Bill Berg mentioned, it is not in a state that people should be living in it who are vulnerable. However, we do have a period of time, 18 to 24 months, to use it for low-barrier triage, and that's what we're doing today. The people who are going to be relocated, they'll have up to 16 months of rental assistance, from what I understand. They will get to choose their new place, they're offered lots of options, and ultimately, if they don't choose an option, we'll still work with them to keep them housed in the building, even as we ramp up operations of a triage facility. So I love Kayla's suggestions, though, and I'd welcome you, Kayla, to work with our homelessness coordinator, Emily Halken, because I think you've got some really good things that we could piggyback on. But the long shot of it is, this building currently is an SRO, but at any time, it could shut down. There's no guarantee that it continues to operate. The reason it's being sold is the woman's retiring. It could be converted to market-rate housing if somebody bought it, we can't stop that. But what we're doing here is ensuring that it is permanent supportive housing in the long term for those who are formerly homeless, to do exactly what you, ma'am, were suggesting, and what Kayla hoped for, it just not on the path that you suggest. So I know that Sacramento's a place where people have different visions. We have to house our unsheltered people, and it is a crisis that continues to grow. This is one of the few elegant solutions we have, and hopefully you understand that.
Moved and seconded. Thank you again for all who have worked on this. This is going to provide real relief to the homeless problem downtown. Not a cure, but real relief. The most beds for triage for 18 months or so that we've had, and it's a very important step in the right direction. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, oppose, abstain. Very good. All right. That was important, and now, tonight, we get to the main event, the waterfront. And I would like to ask Michael Jasso, our Assistant City Manager for Economic Development, and Richard Rich, to come on up. I know Michael first, and I just want to make a couple brief comments. I spoke at length about this on the waterfront on Thursday night, so I'm not going to repeat that. But I just want to start very briefly by saying that for many decades, the people of Sacramento have dreamt about making our waterfront more accessible to the people, and more of a destination. And we've been thwarted for a long time, mostly because of a lack of resources, and maybe the lack of a sufficient push. Over the last couple of years, we have been very creative, working with our Visit Sacramento partners and all the other stakeholders to find a way to expand the Community Convention Center, the Memorial Auditorium, and the Community Center Theater in exactly the way those projects have been envisioned, but with a real contribution of the hoteliers. And as a result, we freed up 40-plus million dollars to be able to invest in another destination amenity, the waterfront. That's the opportunity that's being presented here tonight. I can't wait for the public and the council to see what is being put forward, and I hope we take a bold step this evening. Mr. Jasso?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Before Richard Rich and City Treasurer John Colville set out to detail the development of the Destination Sacramento program for the redevelopment of the Old Sacramento waterfront and funding through the use of the transit occupancy tax, I wanted to take a short moment to contextualize this effort to our commitment to supporting citywide inclusive economic development agenda. Although it would be easy to think of the program you will see as an investment in our downtown and simply a continued narrative of downtown investment, this would in fact be a mistake. The Old Sacramento waterfront is an asset of the entirety of the city and should be examined as such. Around the world, public places like the Old Sacramento waterfront and its nearby amenities afford residents and visitors alike a common place to gather, to celebrate, to take pride in, and to enjoy together. Examples of this include Riverfront Park in Nashville and the River Walk in San Antonio. In all the best examples, vibrant public places combined with public and private amenities can are community unifiers, points of public pride, showcases for public art, and foster the convergence of all communities. We believe that the program you will see presented will begin to redevelop our Old Sacramento waterfront as part of a larger urban river core that affords exuberant play, celebrates history, and attracts visitors from far beyond our city's borders. Additionally, we believe a revitalized waterfront will contribute fiscally to the city directly and indirectly, which in turn allows us to extend resources to other communities of the city. Moving forward, it's our belief and anticipation that as additional TOT capacity is realized, that funding mechanism can be a source for other Destination Sacramento projects, such as the potential redevelopment of Sleep Train Arena, as was called upon by Councilmember Ashby at the September 25, 2018 council meeting. With that in mind, I turn this discussion over to Richard Rich to walk you through a presentation of reimagining and revitalizing our waterfront. Thank you.
Just test this once. There we go. Mayor, City Council members, Mr. City Manager, my name is Richard Rich. I am the city's waterfront project manager. I wanted to start tonight by thanking the many, many people whose contributions have helped shape tonight's presentation. But even the list of just the organizations that we've spoken to and received input from took a whole page. So simply, I will say to everyone that has been involved, and many of them who are behind us here, sincere thank you for your help in putting this program together. The mayor's goal, also championed by Councilmember Hanson and adopted by this council, has been to create a destination on the riverfront. That is a destination that works equally well on two fronts. First, it is a welcoming riverfront place for all of the people of Sacramento, and it also needs to be an investment asset. Successful historic districts are successful because they attract people by the millions, not because there's a Ferris wheel, but because people know that they can have fun there with other people and in an exciting place. They can see a show, hear music, enjoy a meal, dance. It's a combination of fresh entertainment, the place, and creative management. And when cities get that combination right, they have a powerful marketing tool. For example, when New Orleans sells its conventions, they actually sell the French Quarter. This is a page off of their website. We spoke last year with the board of the French Quarter Management District, and they told us that the French Quarter receives 98% of all the conventioneers who attend conventions in New Orleans. Old Sac gets less than 3%. As we all work to grow Sacramento's economy, it is imperative that the Old Sacramento waterfront become the asset that groups like Mike Testa and Visit Sacramento and Barry Broom and GSEC can use to more successfully market our region. Toward that end, and to accomplish this, we begin to work on a four-part plan. First part is a slate of projects that we call the Destination Sacramento Program. That would be financed through available transit occupancy tax bonds, and this is the subject of tonight's discussion. The second part of our plan is a group of capital improvement projects, which are not eligible for TOT, and therefore, we intend to pursue those independently. The third part of the plan is to leverage the city's investment by triggering public and private partnerships, and to develop surrounding vacant parcels, which you'll see in a moment, that will add new vitality and new public revenues. And the fourth part of our plan, and very importantly, is to form a district-wide operating entity that will share resources and decision-making, and that entity is, will be the part that actually brings the life to the projects that we're talking about tonight. So briefly, our progress. Over the past year, state parks, the city, DSP, the private sector, we have worked to talk about what it takes to pull together this entity. Those talks have been facilitated by Valley Vision. We drafted and executed a memorandum of agreement, which was approved by this council in March of this year. But before beginning design, we actually began by reaching out to the stakeholders. We have listened to many voices over the past two years. We continue to listen today, and we will continue to listen and to collaborate as we move these projects through the program. And instead of hiring a traditional, instead of hiring a firm to do concept design, as was our initial direction, we were able to create a program in conjunction with the city manager's office and Councilmember Hanson, where we were able to retain under stipend five professional design teams and the People of Sacramento to submit ideas on a larger design challenge. The Waterfront Idea Makers Program resulted in the submission of hundreds of ideas and over 9,500 votes for the People's Choice Awards. And with this kind of response, the question then became to the staff, how do we select the appropriate plan? Well, like all good staff, we started with priorities. We have four of them. First was what did we hear from the stakeholders? Second was the Idea Maker Waterfront Program, the Waterfront Idea Makers Program in itself had five goals related to improving the experiences of all people who visit the waterfront. Third was public assembly, and that actually takes two tracks here. The first is that it is fundamentally important that we create places that can be activated, and that we have a requirement to vet these projects for their TOT eligibility. And finally, we look for projects that were feasible. It means, could we afford them, and were they technically feasible? So with that matrix of ideas, we then began our review, and here's an example. I'm going to take you through all of the work that we had done on this. This is a vision of StanTech, one of our idea makers. This, you can see, it's a magnificent concept of a floating public space full of activities, even sustainable wetlands. It really checks all the boxes, except the feasibility part. The cost estimate of this concept is more than our entire budget. And so what we needed to do was to, can you continue looking? And as we did that, we noticed another large idea that fit all of the concepts that we had, and that was to clear the area, all of the city property, between the state's passenger terminal, down through the schoolhouse, and really start over. Now, the irony is that, as we looked at the other proposals, all five of the idea makers' teams had the same concept. And so we began to think that if the best firms, basically in our opinion in the nation in terms of waterfront development, said, "You can do better with your property. You can open it," we took notice of that. I'd like to stop here just for a moment and to thank the five design maker teams. They worked well beyond the small stipend that we were able to provide to them, and they produced five really incredible visions. I wish we could have assembled you in some way for three hours, so that each of the teams could make their presentations. They're spectacular. That wasn't possible, so instead, we'll just finish our recap here, so we can get on to the business of the evening. So, taking that advice, we then began to look at our waterfront, and this is the property that is under consideration. If we add into that and acknowledge that state parks has plans of their own in their general plan to be able to develop what they call Riverfront Park, and then add in our new embarcadero, what we're talking about is nothing short of creating an entirely new waterfront for Old Sacramento. With this, we can recreate, we can reestablish the connection between downtown Sacramento and its historic roots. We can give the people of Sacramento a vibrant place, and to enjoy one of our greatest assets, the river. And so the question then is, in order to be able to achieve the economic development goals, how do we then activate that? So again, back to the designers. This is from HEDMA. And you can see the red circles. We went through when we started looking, what are the individual activations that we could be able to pull out? And as we did that with each of the firms, we can have created a short list of projects that we could then, we could work from. This one, I don't know if you can see it from here, but the ideas that we particularly liked were a water fountain, a front street colonnade building, a themed playground, which came up again and again, an entertainment barge on the river, and then a pretty cool idea about using rolling freight cars as shops and as food trucks. All of those met the priorities, met our four priorities. We did the same thing with all of the professional designs, and went through and started to pick out of those the activations that seemed to be common between them all. We went through the public ideas as well, and the kids' ideas, right? I mean, the idea was, who knows better what a kid wants to do than a kid? And during the day, they are our market, are part of our market, and so we were asking them what to do. And we took these seriously, and after reviewing all of the hundreds of presentations, we came up with a short list, and were able to pull together a program of six projects that we are recommending tonight. that we are recommending tonight. Number one, and we're just going to go through them just real briefly. Number one is what we're calling Front Street Landing. This is a proposed two-story building on Front Street, occupying the site of the now largely vacant North Public Market. It would have an open colonnade on the first floor that would be perfect for events and market spaces and performances, and it would have a second public level that could overlook the river, the Embarcadero, Old Sacramento, and it could have a café, or a beer garden, or some similar concession, and it could become one of the coolest spots in town to go and enjoy the sunset over the river. We also wanted a place where we could have festivals, pop-up festivals and events. We're not talking about 35,000 people, but maybe 5,000 people in Old Sacramento. This would be a place for people to get together and enjoy the river. It would include an area for a stage, although perhaps not a permanent stage, and it would be the setting for other components, for instance, Calliope. Calliope is our working title for a playground-like experience, where kids and families could have fun during the day, but it is also a place for adults in the evening. Now, walking on the river is kind of a universal activity. It could actually be romantic. But people need to see a destination when they're walking, or in our case, someplace to turn around, and Calliope could be that place at night, it was full of sound and light, and maybe an ice cream cone, before coming back along the Embarcadero. Now, the water fountain was by far our most popular idea that came in. And for that, I'd like to introduce Ellen Sullivan, who was our Assistant Project Manager on the waterfront, who has a special guest. Redlin.
Good evening. I'm Ellen Sullivan with Economic Development. The proposed water fountain serves dual purposes: interactive play during the day and a water show at night. About two years ago, Summer Santich, a resident of District One, made a presentation to council sharing her vision for a water show on the Sacramento River to highlight Sacramento's history. After the council meeting, Wet Design, a world-renowned fountain design company, reached out to Mayor Protem Ashby to express their interest in a fountain project in Sacramento. She put them into contact with city staff, and we began working with Wet, independently of the Waterfront Idea Makers Program, to design a water fountain for Sacramento. Wet included Summer in the design phase to ensure her ideas were incorporated into the plans, and Summer is here this evening to present Wet's designs to you.
Summer, and I want to thank Councilmember Ashby for making the link here. This is really an exciting part of the overall vision and project. Summer, welcome.
Thank you.
Again.
Again, yes. Hello, City Council and Mayor Steinberg. My name is Summer Santich, and I'm a sophomore at Indercombe High School, and I live in District One. I'm also an early member of Crown Downtown. I came to council in June of 2017 and proposed the idea that we create a water feature that will bring Sacramento, the Sacramento community and surrounding areas to Sacramento to celebrate our vibrant history and our rich, and our rich history. I've been working with Angelique Ashby, Richard Rich, and Ellen Sullivan in a water feature company called Wet Design out of Burbank, California. I am not participating in the contest for the waterfront. That being said, I will now present my ideas. The first design is called Water Play. This features a simple design that is very interactive with children and families. You can program this design to interact with the train or simply dance to music. This feature involves water jets that'll spit water from the ground, and there's an endless amount of possibilities that can be done with this family-friendly design. The second design is called Water Connection. It's a bridge that connects Sacramento to West Sacramento. It's a piece of art that can be used as a pedestrian and bike-friendly crossover. Not only is it a gorgeous feature, but it can also be used for water shows. This bridge is a multi-functioning art design that will give people a sense of artistic Sacramento. The third design relates very closely to my original idea. It is titled Water History. There's four main parts to this design. The first part has the feeling of modern and futuristic Sacramento. It has a showing of light and water combined to create a very beautiful showcase. The second part of this design features water that can simulate the passing of a locomotive train, or it can move with the spectator. The third event of this design goes back to the gold mining age of Sacramento, with the showing of water jumping into shape, to the shape of gold pans. The final part of this water history design is the beautiful garden that is peaceful and guides us through Sacramento's historic nature. The fourth feature has the name of Water Voyage. It has a gathering of high-end flotation devices that can be programmed to be set up in many different forms. These formations can range from all in a single file line, to practically any shape your mind desires. The fifth feature is Water Quilt. This design has the same foundation as the first design, Water Play, but instead of having 500 water jets, you can have 10,000 water jets that lights up during the night to create a magnificent display of light and colorful properties that will bring the community together. A property that differentiates this feature from the first is the option to personalize each jet with the name, memoriam, or family name. These water features relate Sacramento back to the river. The river has had such an immense impact on who we are as a city, and now we can come back, connect back to our history. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much for your time! And your creativity! Wow!
Thank you, Summer.
Too young to be hired as a city designer?
So, there are two other proposed Destination Sacramento projects. First is the Floating Terrace. The existing systems of docks and barges along the river need to be revamped. A floating terrace gives people a new place and new ways to interact with the river, providing recreational opportunities, a performance stage, gathering spaces, or even a safe swimming As an open competition entry in the Waterfront Idea Makers Program, the Sacramento History Alliance submitted a rooftop deck for the Sacramento History Museum. The deck will be utilized for events, performances, picnicking, or other activities, offering year-round views of the river, as well as a unique view of the tower and I Street Bridges, West Sacramento, and the Old Sacramento Historic District. Now I'll turn it back over to Richard to recap the Destination Sacramento Program.
Thank you, Ellen. Before going on, I'd actually like to just go off-script for just a moment and make a couple of comments. One, I don't know if it was clear, but Summer actually went down to Wet's Design Studios in LA and was working with them on these concepts. So the work that you see there while it was Wet's, I think it was also Summer's. One of the important parts about that is the idea that you saw a broad range of a concept, right? We talk about a fountain, and you saw that there were maybe six or eight different concepts for a fountain. As you look at this, at this program of projects there, each one of those has the same type of potential to be developed during the next phase, during feasibility. So when you see an event deck, or when you see a festival lawn, don't take that literally in terms of the pictures that you saw, but as that those are concepts that we will be working and integrating together, should we get authorization to move into feasibility. So, the idea makers, the teams that came up with the ideas, also gave us rough order of magnitude costs for each of the projects, which are summarized, which are summarized here. These are, I want to emphasize, very consumptual numbers. They are not based on actual designs, and they're based on the designer's experience with other similar projects. Our intent is to use these as budgets as we move forward, and then to work within those. So, within the Water, the Destination Sacramento Program, beyond the benefits of opening the waterfront to our residents, and to it becoming an asset that can be used for Sacramento's economic development, we wanted to know, we staff wanted to know, whether there were potential returns on this public investment. And so we retained Kaiser Marston to compare. This is where, a really great slide coming up. Uh-oh. Okay. Tech?
Blank slate. It's a blank slate.
It's a really great slide. It's worth the wait. Okay. Thank you, Marco. Marco keeps us out of trouble most of the time. The, so, this is, this is part of the work that Kaiser Marston put together for us, and what we asked him to do was to compare where Old Sacramento is now in terms of its TOT and sales tax revenues, and then to compare that against benchmarks. Now, we didn't go to category killer benchmarks, like the French Quarter. We went to benchmarks that we believed that were similar. So for instance, Old Town San Diego, very similar to our Old Sacramento. And then the Gaslamp District again, and then Beale Street in Memphis, which has got a great backstory in terms of what it was able to do for its community. And you can see that if we take the lowest values of those three benchmarks, and then apply those values against Old Sacramento's square footage, that the lowest amount that we could expect to get from Old Sacramento, were we to be able to sort of bring it to a level that we expected to come to, is double the amount that we're getting right now. And if we take it to the highest percentage, you can see that it's almost four times the amount. We thought that was significant and a great benchmark for us to be able to use in terms of how we look at this investment. So while the Destination Program will create the waterfront...
Richard, a clarity question.
Quick question. So, these are TOT revenues, or sales tax and TOT, but there's an economic activity for all of Old SAC and downtown, I would assume, as well. Is that something that they're looking at? What it would generate in economic activity outside of just our taxes, our tax revenue?
I'm sorry, I didn't really hear the question.
So, I am assuming that if we do this, we will get tax revenues through BOT and our portion of the sales tax, but there will also be other economic activity in the area as a result of this?
Yes.
That's tangential to this development. Have we looked at that at all? Like, what will it do for the merchants there, others? What will this generate?
Okay, that was exactly the question that we were asking Kaiser Marston.
Right.
Is, is where would this go? Were we able to create the new waterfront and be able to achieve those levels? For instance, I'll give you more specifics. Old SAC sales per square foot is about $190 a foot. The lowest benchmark is Old Town San Diego at $350 a square foot. So if you took that value and had applied it against the Old Sacramento square footage, that results then in that amount. They also built in the idea that there would be, not, not past the borders of Old...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering, so from that, you're going to get additional property tax as well? Is that figured in here?
Yeah, that is, that is true, but it is not as direct, and the issue there is, right, because greater sales would equal greater rent eventually, greater rent would equal greater NOI, which would result in...
Right.
Right, okay. So the problem is, not the problem, but the, the challenge that we have there is that property tax now from Old Sacramento, and that increment, is pledged to the Innovation and Growth Fund. So we would not be able to capture that for more reinvestment, but it would begin to increase the Innovation and Growth Fund over time, as sales, as the property's traded. We didn't include that, and on this one, we didn't include jobs either, so we'll get, we'll get to that. Okay, so, moving forward, the Destination Sacramento Program, we believe is a great program, but it is only one of the four legs of our plan, and we wanted to very quickly just go through the other legs, so that you can get the full context of the plan that we're working on. So, again, the second part of the plan was capital projects that we're going to be pursuing. This will be independent of TOT funds. These are elements in Old Sacramento that I think everybody agrees needs to be worked on. We'll just go through them real briefly. Marco, you're going to need to help me out here, because it's not working.
The I Street, the I Street entrance, the K Street tunnel, and then just the general force of lighting. So, lighting, this is, this, to us is really, I want to say, a no-brainer. Forgive me if that's, if not, that's not respectful. We need to light Old Sacramento in a way that it feels safe and festive for every visitor that goes there, and it doesn't do that now. And so large parts of our population, when they sit and think, "Where should we go?", do not think of Old Sacramento, because they do not feel safe going there. Next is the K Street Tunnel. Again, it works, it's serviceable, but it does not really begin to talk about the experience that you'll have once you get into Old Sacramento. Now, these show probably a little more light than we'll be putting in there. We will preserve the Royal Chicano Air Force murals that are along the side, but we very much want to make this more of an experience. And then the I Street Entrance. It's the first impression that all of our visitors who drive have of Old Sacramento, and it's just not the front door that we want. You can see, this is Michael Sest, hold on a sec, Michael Sestak's view, our work on McKinley Village, and these are the kinds of things that we can do without a tremendous amount of expense. Okay. So, the third part of our plan, of course, is the development partnerships. And you can see that the white area is the new waterfront that we're proposing under Destination Sacramento, but there are at least four, and actually five, opportunities that immediately surround that, that are now vacant. And so when you go to the waterfront, your experience now is more vacant than active. So, as we lead the parade with the investment, that then becomes a catalyst for development of those other parcels. Let's go forward with this. The first one is kind of an interesting opportunity. This trolley actually is owned by a Sacramento businessman. It exists here, in town now. Okay, so imagine that there were lunchtime trolleys that went up and down Capitol Mall, bringing people down to the river for lunch, or solving everyone's favorite problem of Old Sacramento, and that is, there's nowhere to park. Well, there's actually 11,000 parking spaces within four blocks of Old Sacramento, and imagine parking in any one of them, your favorite space, and then picking up the trolley, and it can take you downtown. There are endless possibilities about what this could do, and this, I believe, is something that we should be fostering and helping. It could also expand to the rail yards, Golden One Center. It's really a limited opportunity, unlimited opportunity. Next is a parcel that is owned by State Parks. This is part of their riverfront. You can see here that State Parks has already begun the process of, what can we do with this? We'd love to see this. It gets a nice place for families to have picnics, to be able to walk, be able to put your toes in the water. Next, the 1849 scene, this is, I think you all know, this is the Grassy Knoll. This is a fantastic hotel site. I mean, it's really one of the most unique...
I think we're going to call it that, by the way, but, I just, you know, just thinking.
Everybody calls it, it seems to call it the Grassy Knoll. This is an unbelievable hospitality site. It's on the river, in a historic district. It has all kinds of things going for it. The state is interested and willing to talk to developers who may want to come in and develop a hotel on this site. Next, this is a privately-held site, that is a sunken parking garage, but again, it's on Front Street, and it sort of ends the vitality of that street. It's also right across from the area we want to redevelop. Marco? And then finally, this is a great little site. It's sort of overlooked often. It's between Joe's Crab Shack and the bridge, but what an opportunity for us to really create a front door to the city, right at, right at Capitol Mall. So, you recall, yep, you'll recall that our TOT revenues could double or quadruple simply by meeting the benchmark on sales and TOT. But if we add to that, the infill development, that we just described, the new hotel, those things, then we can actually bump those to almost $3 to $4 million from $700,000 now. That is the type of return that augments creating the people place, creating the economic asset, and creating the public returns. Yep. Go ahead. So, in summary, just, you've seen this Destination Sacramento project, six projects, that's the purpose of tonight's discussion. Second is the capital improvement projects that we will operate separately, operate on separately. The development partnerships are already underway, meaning we're talking about it to everybody, and the idea, very importantly, of the operating partnership, where the state, the city, and the private sector would get together and jointly operate. It is that operation that brings life to the places that we want to build. Both of them need to work in concert. So, next steps, feasibility design. I want to emphasize one thing about this, about the feasibility design, is we've gone through and taken a look at hundreds of ideas on this. We've proposed six of them. We think that they're solid ideas, but we also know that they are going to morph as we go through this design process. We've listened intently for the entire process, we'll continue that. Before we come back to you, we will have confirmed the costs of the projects and their TOT eligibility, and we'll report back in the fall.
And the approval of tonight's resolution that I'm putting forward still will require a subsequent approval by the council for any individual project, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Both for the content and for the budgets of the individual projects.
Right.
That ends our presentation. We're willing, we're happy to answer questions.
I do want to call up Treasurer Colville here for a moment, because as much of a wow as that presentation was, in my view, I think it was great, it is all dependent on the financing... I do want to call up Treasurer Colville here for a moment because as much of a wow as that presentation was, in my view, I think it was great, it is all dependent on the financing structure and how we would pay for this. And I explained a little bit about the history earlier about how Councilmember Hanson and I sort of worked together over the two-plus years with Visit Sacramento to save 40-plus million dollars in those budgets that frees us up to do this now. Nothing is accidental here.
Yes.
But I want you to explain how financially this works.
Okay, thank you.
Please.
What an incredible project. And Summer, I have a daughter who's a sophomore in high school, and it never amazes, never stops to amaze me how mature young adults are, so outstanding.
Look at that.
But my daughter would freak out for the day before, before she makes a presentation.
An effusive city treasurer. I like it.
Yeah, she can come work in my office any day, any day. Well, good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the City Council. I'd like to explain how the proposed funding for the Destination Sacramento Program came to be and why there is a range of values of what is being proposed. First, the funding comes from the TOT revenue bonding capacity that was not utilized for the completion of the C-3 project. Last September, when I came before you to seek authority to issue the 2018 TOT revenue bonds, I asked you to approve up to $350 million for all three projects. This amount provided me with a cushion to avoid the need to seek further authority in the event there was significant cost overruns, since the guaranteed maximum price would not be available until early calendar year 2019 for the theater or market conditions changed dramatically. But the result was, we issued $305.2 million, inclusive of the $20 million in taxable bonds, five of which is going to be, if approved, to seed the Destination Sacramento Fund and win resolution. At this time, I also indicated that it will be coming back in early 2019 to seek approval to issue additional $50 million in TOT revenue bonds to pay for the ballroom at the Convention Center. The city would be reimbursed for the debt service payments through monthly collections received from the newly formed Sacramento Tourism Infrastructure District. And based on information gathering through strategizing with Morgan Stanley, I believe that it is in the city's best interest to issue standalone STID bonds, thereby freeing up the capacity that could be utilized in the 2019 TOT revenue bonds for other TOT-eligible projects within the city. Those STID bonds would generate an approximate $42.6 million of the $50 million needed to fund the ballroom. Additionally, the STID would pay the $7.4 million shortfall the city as STID revenues grew. So if we look at Slide 1 here, it's a pie graph of all the sources and uses of the funds that were for the C-3 project. What you'll see is Memorial Auditorium came in at $16.2 million, is, I think, nearly complete. Memorial Auditorium came in a little higher than anticipated at $96.4 million. And then you'll see the gray, yellow, and blue slices of the pie is $191 million for the main renovation of the Convention Center. The $42.6 million, that's the STID portion of the ballroom, and the remaining $7.4 that the city's fronting with TOT to make that $50 million contribution. Where we find the capacity is the yellow slice that's indicated, the Convention Center Ballroom STID, $42.6 million. That was initially going to be TOT revenue bonds. It's now going to be standalone STID bonds, so we no longer need to use those TOT to front that money, thereby creating the available excess capacity for the Destination Sacramento Program from the C-3 financing plan. Any questions so far? The resolution indicates an amount up to $42 million, and that is due to several variables that are fluid currently.
Excuse me, John, is that 42...
That does not include the 5 million.
Plus the 5 that's already going in.
Right, that does not include the 5 million that is coming out of the reserves left over.
Got it, okay.
So the variables included whether it's going to be taxable, a tax exempt, that will depend on the expenditures and the private and public funding of Richard's projects. Funding of a reserve account, whether we'll use a surety or cash funding. The, how rapid the STID prepayment can be from the remaining $7-plus million that the city's pre-funding of the $50 million, whatever the naming rights are, if we add naming rights to the theater and the Convention Center, that's going to add an additional amount that can be bonded against, and whatever interest rates are. So the actual amount will not be determined until August when we go to the market for STID, and if approved, these TOT bonds. Finally, this slide depicts the robust growth of TOT revenues over the last five years. The cash flow models that were used in 2018 when I came before you in September use actual TOT receipts through fiscal year 2018 and current hotel room inventory at that time. We did not include any inventory growth, only extremely conservative annual growth of 3.4%, which was conservative compared to what 3.8 that CBRE, our consultant, said. The growth component is very consistent with long-term inflation expectations, as does not consider the extensive amount of new hotel rooms currently in construction or in the planning and entitlement process. However, new hotels are assumed in the system as there are already sufficiently demands within an already tight supply. I would expect to see a slight pullback in the double-digit TOT revenue growth during the shuttering of the Convention Center from summer of 2019 through fall of 2020. But going forward, given the increased room capacity and the evolution of Sacramento into a destination stop, I would expect TOT growth to continue. This will generate more capacity in the future for the city to invest in other TOT-eligible projects within the city, particularly, as Michael indicated, the reuse of the Sleep Train Arena. With that, I have questions. We'll take in any questions.
Any questions of the treasurer? Okay. So the members, I'm sure we'll have questions and comments from the outstanding presentations, but I think what we'll do now is we'll take public testimony. We'll hear from the public, then we'll turn it back to the council for questions and our comments. And we have a special guest who will be our first member of the public to testify this evening. He happens to be the mayor of West Sacramento and our partner in waterfront development, that is the Honorable Christopher Cabaldin, who I invited here tonight because whatever we do on our side is all part of a broader regional vision to enhance the waterfront on all sides. And West Sacramento has done an outstanding job. And, but we're, but come on up, but we are catching up to you, man. Welcome.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm so glad you're here.
It's an honor to be here. I'm Christopher Cabaldin. I'm the mayor of West Sacramento, and I'm bringing greetings and applause and support and a commitment to partner, to continue the partner, the deep partnership between our two cities that has already radically transformed the water fronts of both of our communities for the whole region. And the opportunity to double down even further on taking advantage of an asset that is so profound, not just for our cities, but for the entire region, is an opportunity that we want to, we want to walk that with you. Even in my own city, when we do our neighborhood workshops in places far afield from the waterfront, in the neighborhoods like Bright, one of the poorest neighborhoods in my city, and we do 16-month strategic planning workshops with neighborhood residents, asking them what they want, and we think what's going to come back is a workforce development center or a clinic or something else in their neighborhood. Every single time, what comes back is, we want you to develop the waterfront. And we have to go back and say, "Are you sure that was the number-one thing on your list? Because that's not this neighborhood." And it's a reminder that an inclusive economy is, also includes inclusive recreation, an inclusive connection to nature, the opportunity to enjoy, to be entertained for free for a family that can't even, may not even be able to afford a ticket to the lawn at Rayleigh Field. But the waterfront, the riverfront in our region and between our two cities, has always been a place that felt like you were going somewhere special, something that drew from your heart and your soul and that was emblematic of what this region was about. And if you could afford nothing else, you could afford to deliver that kind of experience for you and your family. It's one of the reasons why we've invested so heavily in it as well. Our TOT revenues from the Old Town Inn and West Sacramento are not quite up to what yours are, so we can't match you dollar-for-dollar, even at the 10% level, but we are absolutely committed to partnering together. And we've done that for many years. I mean, Rayleigh Field would not have been possible without Old Sacramento. Embassy Suites fed off of Rayleigh Field. Embassy Suites then made it possible for us to attract CalSTRS. Without that hotel there, we wouldn't have been able to have the CalSTRS Tower. And the story of the synergy between our two communities and each of our progress reinforcing and uplifting each other has been, has never stopped. And so the opportunity to do this together, I think, is really extraordinary. We don't have our TOT revenues at a level that would pay for much more than a stoplight or a bus stop in West Sacramento, but I will say that our other investments will support the work that you're contemplating in plans like this in our common regional downtown and on the waterfront, whether it is the new CalSTRS Tower or the Inherited Center, and projects of smaller scale like the barn that has just opened and all the public art that we are delivering, trying to keep up with a joint vision that we outlined together as two cities and the tremendous progress that we have achieved to bring that to reality. So I'm just here to say cheers, to applaud, and to say thank you for the partnership that we've had, and we're really looking forward to the opportunity to deepen that even further and to really deliver on an inclusive economy that includes a diverse range of entertainment and spiritual connections to the waterfront and to our collective downtowns together. So thank you very much.
Mayor, thank you so much for taking the time to come tonight and, you know, making visible what's so important, that we're in it together, and it is a partnership, and we support all your aspirations, and I know you do ours as well, and this waterfront is a big piece of our partnership, so thank you.
What we've already, just in the transfer, in the connectivity, I mean, the very first project I worked on after I was sworn in as mayor was with Mayor Serna, and it was the very first project jointly that the two cities had undertaken. And at the time, it was this hugely ambitious project to expand the sidewalks on the Tower Bridge, because it was impossible really for two people to pass each other on the bridge, much less a wheelchair or stroller or a bicycle. And that project, in some sense, launched a relationship and a partnership that has never stopped, and just that, you know, in the last year or two or three between the replacement project for the I Street Bridge, the upper deck, the jump bikes and scooters, the progress on the Broadway Bridge, the work that, you know, the $150 million of external funding we've achieved together for the street project, we've just had success after success after success when we partnered smartly together and where we've outlined a vision together and then let ourselves each go off and just make it happen. And it's a relationship and a set of progress that we really appreciate, and we are fully committed to joining with you.
I just say one other thing. I remember when I got elected and before I got sworn in, I asked you for advice. And one of the things you said to me that has always stuck is that when it comes to the waterfront, don't spend endless amounts of time planning. You have to do good planning, but don't plan the perfect master plan for the entire waterfront. Get going. And we took that to heart, and I hope that that is represented here with the presentation, the wow presentation that we have seen tonight. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Let's go. We have how many, 25 speakers?
I have 27 speakers signed up. The first one is Samuel Ortega, John Frazier, then Bob Cicado, then Maurice Reed. Samuel here? I don't see Samuel.
Good evening. My name is John Frazier. I'm the Capital District Superintendent for California State Parks. The Capital District includes the Railroad Museum and all of the state property in and around Old Sacramento. State Parks is proud to support the city's vision for the Old Sacramento waterfront and will continue to be an active partner in its realization. It's our view these destination amenities will not only bring fresh appeal to the area but complement the cultural mission of State Parks as it preserves and tells the history of the region and the state. We also recognize our critical role in the area and are in the process, as Richard mentioned, of considering all measure and all projects the state can undertake to advance the good work the city has initiated. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's a new day.
Bob Cicado, then Maurice Reed, then Delta Pickmello.
Good evening, Mayor and council. We were here last week. It's a pleasure to be here again. So as mentioned before, I'm the chair for the Sacramento History Alliance, the nonprofit the city of Sacramento set up to protect and promote Sacramento history and cultural heritage. At the DS with me today, as mentioned, is Maurice and Delta, our executive director, and we, our board, would wholeheartedly support this and endorse this waterfront project. It's fantastic. It's great, it's great to see what's about to happen. But since we are looking through this with our watchful dog eyes for all things historical, we'd like to request to have the opportunity to sit down with the city staff to ensure that Old Sacramento National Landmark is protected and the city's historic holdings in Old Sacramento are given high priority. And we heard some of that today, which is great, but there's also opportunity because some of the projects, as you talked about, have some significant underground assets that we want to make sure that we maintain and are enhanced. So we gave them a more specific feedback, and we submitted it to the clerk for you two as well, and then at that point, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
One more thing. We've got a lot of supporters here for history. We asked them to turn out. We wondered if they could stand and be recognized.
Sure.
Well, here are some of our board members here. Lena Fatt.
Thank you for coming, and we welcome you. And maybe, Richard, you should make a comment about how we tend to integrate and be always focused on integrating history with modernizing the waterfront. How does it fit together?
Yeah, Summer, thank you so much. I really like her idea, the water history fountain with the gold pans is exactly what we're looking at.
Excellent. Gold pans, okay. Go ahead, Richard.
Any questions?
Well, I'm going to ask Richard to respond to how we integrate history with modernizing the waterfront. Go ahead.
So I think the first and overriding condition is that Old Sacramento is the place it is now because of its history, and nothing that we want to do is to take away from that history, but more to augment it.
And I just want to make a comment. Some of the development that happened took out the significant of the underground, and again, we're the supporter of making that accessible to the public and keep our historic landmark. That's what we really want, to make sure, especially property. Al Street is significant for that.
Well, I'm looking forward, as you know, continuing the discussion that Maurice began when we went to the board and to, because it will be a significant discussion on how history is treated, how we do the storytelling, how we tell the lore, and can we bump that game?
Thank you.
Next speaker is Shira Lane, then Craig Segal, then Richard Lewis.
Oh, again.
Shira, long day.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
So I started Upcycle Pop, which is a market for upcycled and repurposed items. Originally, my dream idea, my place, was to be in Old Sacramento. Why? Because that's where the tourists are, and that's where our artists need to sell. We need to sell to the tourists so we can bring external dollars back into Sacramento. This is an old hat box. Now it's a battery-operated Bluetooth speaker. These are the kinds of things that my creatives create, made by Rare Bird, specifically Caden. I would like to create a market here. I would like to promote Sacramento as a creative but also sustainable city. We do, we care about sustainability, and I would like to create a market that is all about that, that we have a market with local artists, and this helps our economic development for our creatives, that they have an outlet to the tourists. And it's going to be fun, with lots of live music and live art and entertainment, and upstairs, a wonderful café would be amazing. So thank you so much for all the work that you've put into this, and thank you so much for considering having art in Old Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speakers Craig Segal, then Richard Lewis, and Michael Alt.
Hi, I'm Craig Segal. I'm here today in my own capacity. I'm an environmental attorney in town. I'm also on the executive committee of the Environmental Council of Sacramento, and I was honored to win the public competition in the waterfront idea makers portion for the nonprofessional entries. And what I appreciated more than the city's check were the over 400 people who voted to remove or deck the highway. I want to raise that issue now, not to suggest the city commit funds to that right now, although the city did complete a design on that effort about a decade ago now that Caltrans approved, but to suggest not losing the opportunity. Caltrans has proposed to spend about $1.5 billion on I-5 along our riverfront, essentially re-upping the truck-filled trench that cuts the city off from its river. The ideas you're hearing tonight are the right ideas, but they're only a start. If they're going to work, we need to connect the city to the river. So my ask for you tonight, which I think you may rehear, is that city staff engage now with Caltrans and with Secog to look seriously at decking, in particular. Removal is also an option, obviously, but decking seems the way to go and provides opportunities to build on the Crocker Park I- build on the Crocker Park idea. It provides opportunities to get more taxable revenue to build housing, to build hotels, and it has significant interests there, both in the development community and in the public at large. This is also a fundable opportunity. In addition to air rights, Prop 68 provides funds for new public parks. SB 1 provides funds for complete street infrastructure. And again, this is something that cities across the country have managed, from St. Paul to Rochester to Seattle to Portland. We don't need to continue the mistake we made now over 70 years ago when we began putting in roads along the waterfront. If we're really going to reconnect it, you should move forward with the proposal tonight, but you should also direct staff to begin planning efforts to move this idea forward and be happy to work with staff in any of that in my own capacity.
Very important.
Thank you.
Point, thank you.
Richard Lewis, then Michael Alt, then Kip Blewett.
Well, good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the City Council, our city manager. Oh, I'm Richard Lewis, President and CEO of Broadway Sacramento, Broadway Music Circus and Broadway on Tour. Take a moment now to locate the exit, no. Just want to say I'm in the entertainment world as well as arts and education and I'm a big fan of the rising tides lift all boats. When the G1, which is a big project that you guys took on, which you have a history of doing, and I think this is terrific where you're going, Sacramento Bee called me, wasn't I worried what was it going to do to my business? I said, "It's going to help. Everything helps." So, and they didn't run that because it wasn't negative, so there you go. So, yeah, I'm supporting the Destination Sacramento, in particular, the idea that provides you with enough funding to take care of business and in particular, this focus on the waterfront, I think is terrific. It's a great asset for the community and I think it really deserves a lot of love and attention. And, really, that was kind of a, I'm a fan. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Michael Alt, then Kip Blewett, then Bob Cook.
Love to follow that. Thank you very much.
That's great.
Members of Council, Mayor Michael Alt with the Downtown Partnership. I think to say Old Sacramento has waited its turn is a reality. We've got an opportunity and one of the things that Richard has talked a lot about in the meetings that we've had is cities are known for their destinations and the identity and we are building a destination and have an opportunity here. This is so much bigger than just Old Sacramento. We are not doing this just for Old Sacramento. Yes, the property owners, the businesses have put in their time, but they've also seen a lot of development in this city that hasn't necessarily been focused on the waterfront. We've got an opportunity to remake our waterfront and continue to change the identity that this region will have for Sacramento. We cannot do this incrementally. We've got to make an investment and have to make a big, bold investment to change the way Old Sacramento is activated. We are a partner with you. We see the opportunity in Old Sacramento. At our State of the Downtown Breakfast this year, Mayor, we heard you talk about big things coming for this community. Over the last couple of weeks, we've talked about MLS coming. We've seen the momentum with the Golden One Center. We've talked about investments in this region. Old Sacramento and the waterfront is time. We will support you. We are looking forward to being active with you and activating this district and we urge that you support Resolution B and move forward on this tonight. We need to move. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Kip Blewett, then Bob Cook.
Kip Blewett with Rubicon Partners. My partners and I have property interests and have been developers here for a long time, but I want to note that we have no property interests in Old Sacramento at this time. So, I'm here completely because I believe, as Michael said, that the time for Old Sacramento is now and I don't think we can call ourselves the River City without a riverfront destination. And I want to echo a couple of things that Mayor Cabaldin said. Spent 15 years on the DSP. I've also been on the Visit Sacramento Board, but spent a few years on the Metro Chamber Board and we did a civic amenities survey of the entire six-county region of Sacramento. And when it came back, I was stunned at what it said. It said across all of those regions, all of those counties, it wasn't soccer fields, it wasn't swim stadiums, their identity was surrounding the riverfront. The number one in our entire six-county region was the riverfront. So, as all of you look at this as leaders, I think to take that into consideration as you move forward here and echo again what our mayor said, which is that we need to move quickly. If we wait for the perfect plan, I've seen this before where we have created a grand plan that connects everything, that seems to move everything forward and it just never moves forward. So, the time is now. If we're going to be a River City, we've got to have a riverfront destination. This gives us sort of our Marina Green. The time is now and for the first time, I think we are going to start looking, it shows the leverage, we're going to start looking at investments in Old Sacramento as well. So, I urge you to move forward. Thank you.
Boing. Thank you.
Next speaker is Bob Cook, then Terry Harvigo, and then Janie Isen.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name's Bob Cook and I am thrilled to be here tonight to mark a very important moment, not only for the waterfront, but for our entire city. As the Chair of both the Old Sacramento Advisory Committee and the Chair of Downtown Sacramento Partnership, I first want to thank you all and I want to thank all the city leaders tonight for their vision and hard work that ensured that we could get here today. At the DSP, you know, we share in that vision and the development of the waterfront is our top strategic development priority this year. On a personal note, my family's been in Sacramento for generations and we've been involved in Old Sacramento since the 1960s. I still keep my office in Old Sacramento. Over the years, I've seen small attempts by the city to keep Old Sacramento going. While appreciated, today is different. Today, we have a genuine opportunity and funding to embrace our future. So, I want to thank Mayor Steinberg. I want to thank Councilmember Hanson and all the members of the City Council. I want to tell you that I'm impressed and I want to tell you that I'm encouraged by your actions. Your commitment to a vibrant and active waterfront will change the face of our city. The Old Sacramento waterfront has the potential to bring incredible opportunity and a renewed energy to our city. This is the right time for this investment. I got to tell you that at times I can, Richard knows, that at times I can be a skeptic and I am. I'm a little fearful that the TOT revenue will be divided into too many smaller projects that won't end up making a long-term difference for our city and I want to encourage you to not fall into that trap. Instead, let's follow through on the vision for that renewed energy, that place to be proud of, to be that top destination. I ask your support in allocating all TOT revenues to the Destination Sacramento Fund and choosing to make a true investment in our city's future. I want to thank you for making this a priority.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you.
Next speaker is Terry Harvigo, then Janie Isen.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Terry Harvigo. I'm a Sacramento resident and I've been a property and business owner for 20 years, not quite as long as Bob's family, but 20 years. But also have been involved in a variety of organizations throughout this area and what that's given me is a chance to really look at this project, not just from my own lens, but from what other organizations are seeing and how projects like this can really help our region. This is an opportunity we just can't afford to squander. It's right there in front of us and we need to move forward. To even be having this conversation today is a tribute to just a great deal of work done by so many, so many in the private sector, so many behind us, our friends over at the state and our public sector people like Richard, who's put in a tremendous amount of work to get us there. In addition to him, we have organizations like DSP, the Metro Chamber, Visit Sacramento, GSAC, everybody's working to move this forward, but none of this would be possible without the leadership and vision coming from you, our elected officials. Mayor Steinberg, Councilman Hanson, and members of the council, your commitment to a vibrant and active waterfront will change the face of our city for generations to come. Most great cities have great waterfronts and we should too. Sacramento has a new, bold attitude and it's paying off dividends, so looks what's happened in the past few years. So, let's not piecemeal this. Let's go after this with passion. Let's go after this with conviction. Let's go after this 100% and do it right, not one little step at a time. I've heard the phrase Sacramento's front porch. I love it. So, let's do what our front porch deserves and let's go forward with this. I ask that you choose Option B and create the Destination Sacramento Fund and that you allocate the residual TOT bonding capacity to the waterfront.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman Hanson, and the rest of the council for your vision.
Thank you, Terry. Councilmember Hanson has a comment.
Terry, I just want to thank you and your dad Lloyd because you helped fund the study on branding. You were one of the businesses that stepped up from the private sector and said, "We want to make this happen." The Harvigos have invested in Old Sacramento for a long time, from the Firehouse to all the other projects you've worked on. So, I just appreciate the continuity of leadership because it is families like yours that make it worth this investment and, you know, you just make us proud.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ditto.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
It's Skirfield, then Stephanie Miller.
Janie?
Janie.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers and City Manager Chan. My name is Janie Desmond-Ison. I've been a longtime business owner, property owner, and strong advocate for anything downtown for years, not quite as long as some of my friends back here, but most of what I was going to say tonight has already been said, so I will just share a couple of things anecdotally with you. One being that I was born and raised here. I consider the Old Sacramento waterfront to be a regional asset, not just an Old Sacramento asset. It belongs to everybody in this city. It's where our city began. It's where our region began. This is not about Old Sacramento. That said, I do have a little business in Old Sacramento and it is on the corner of Front and K Street, right across from the Delta King. And when I said I was going to say something anecdotally, for 25 years, Steamers has been serving as somewhat of a visitor's center. By that, I mean people ask constantly the little things about Old Sacramento, where's this and where's that? And you would think that the most asked questions would be somewhere in the lines of where are the restrooms or where's the Railroad Museum or do we get ticketed for parking after 6:00 PM? When actually, I would say in 25 years, the question that we have been asked the most is where is the river? Or isn't there a river around here?
There's the river. Wow.
And you'd say, yes, you could throw a stone in it from our corner, but it isn't easy to find. So, that is what my message is to all of you folks here tonight. I congratulate and thank you, Mayor Steinberg and Steve, for your diligence and your support and your leadership on this project and I'm sure that the rest of the council members will appreciate that how much this riverfront means to all of our districts and all of our region and the community at large, as well as people, the millions of people that come from all around the world to visit the Sacramento waterfront. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Janie. Thank you so much.
I have 16 more speakers. The next is Dave Skirfield and Stephanie Miller.
Thank you. My name is Dave Skirfield and I also am a property owner and been involved in Old Sacramento for a number of years. And I think my father was involved in redevelopment and city council before that, so I do have a little bit of experience in Old Sacramento. But I'm here to support the mayor's and council and DSP's bold vision and commitment of investing the necessary resources in our waterfront. The Old Sacramento waterfront has been a relatively forgotten and underutilized asset for decades. Major cities like ourselves have realized the importance of their waterfront in terms of providing public space, entertainment, cultural amenities, and commercial vitality. Most major cities that border a waterway have invested heavily in waterfront development and the investment has generated significant returns by creating space where locals can take pride and visitors will enjoy and leave a lasting positive impression. As I have a fair amount of experience in the Old Sacramento waterfront district, I would be remiss not to also emphasize the need for the stakeholders and the city to continue to work together to make access to the waterfront inviting easy, friendly, and affordable, whether you are coming from West Sacramento, downtown, Miller Park, Amtrak, the Amtrak station, rail yards, or I-5, and whether by motor vehicle, bicycle, foot, or scooter. As a final note, I would encourage the council to adopt the option of fully funding the waterfront improvements. I have on my bookshelf in my office a number of comprehensive riverfront development plans encompassing the area from Old Sacramento to Miller Park that have never been implemented due to the absence of any funding to implement the plans. Fully funding this effort is critical to implementation and to seed public-private partnerships.
Mr. Skirfield.
Thank you again to the mayor for leading the charge and the council and DSP support.
Thank you so much, sir.
Next speaker is Stephanie Miller, then Cheryl Marcel, then Lilly Allen.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and City Council. I'm Stephanie Miller with Rio City Cafe and I didn't know I was going to be speaking tonight, but there's nowhere else I'd rather be. So, I'm so happy to be here and I thank you all for what you're doing. Richard, thank you so much for everything. I want us to be that city that has a riverfront, a premier riverfront destination. The Old Sacramento waterfront is rich in history, not only Sacramento history, but the history of our great state. This investment we are talking about today would be the catalyst for the Old Sacramento waterfront to once again be the great economic driver it once was. For so long, our waterfront has not reached its full potential. We believe that through this investment, our full potential as a city will be achieved. I ask for your support in allocating all the TOT revenue to the Destination Sacramento Fund. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. And I thank you so much again for everything that you're doing. Thank you.
Cheryl Marcel, then Lilly Allen, then Kevin Esslinger.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Cheryl Marcel. I'm the President and CEO of the California State Railroad Museum Foundation. Thank you so much for the opportunity tonight and I think my message kind of echoes what everybody else has said and I would just say that we, as a great city, can do both. We acknowledge and fully appreciate the great, rich history that we have in this region. The railroad, 150 years ago, united this nation, the Gold Rush history, and the revitalization of the waterfront. We can do both. We appreciate Richard Rich and his efforts to include history. I appreciate the opportunity to reimagine the passenger station and perhaps at some point allow an additional track to come out of the passenger station to serve the 80, 90,000 people that ride the train. I appreciate the passion and the appreciation for the Railroad Museum. Half a million people a year spill out of our doors and into this great district. We want them to have a full experience. We want them to have an appreciation and a desire to learn more about our history, but we want them to come back. We want them to have fun and we want them to invest in our great region. So, I urge you tonight to fully fund this concept. Thank you so much for your partnership. We appreciate Richard Rich, our partnership with State Parks, and you can count on us going forward.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Lilly Allen.
Hi, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Lilly Allen and I'm Sacramento County Parks Commissioner and I'm here in my private capacity tonight. And I want to echo what everyone else has been saying, a resounding yes, this is a wonderful project, but I also think we need to do a little bit more. As Craig was saying earlier, I think we need to deck I-5. What I'm showing up here is a modest mock-up of decking a freeway program. It's already been designed by city staff back in the day and I'm asking you to actively, to direct staff to actively and timely investigate decking now before we lose the opportunity with Caltrans. I don't think we should spend any money on this right now, but I think we should look into it before something goes awry. I'd also like to submit for the record this pamphlet. Other cities are doing it, plenty of cool ones like Portland and less cool ones like Syracuse. We can do it too. It's pretty flippable.
Anyone hear from Syracuse, by the way?
No, why would you leave if you have a decked freeway? But anyway, thank you for your time and I hope you all look forward to doing this with us.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kevin Esslinger, then Joe Rodato, then Mike Testa.
Hello, my name is Kevin Esslinger. I am a property owner in District 4 and hopefully soon to be resident at the end of summer in District 4. And I'm here to echo Craig and Lilly's comments about the opportunity to, well, one, to seize the opportunity with all the projects today are great and to echo everything everyone else said, but also to deck I-5 and look into that. On the practical basis, I thought I saw a proposal forever ago, just doing like economies of scale, like concrete segments that you could just barge in, you just plop down, obviously with a lot of engineering vision. But it doesn't have to be this poor-in-place, $10 billion, you know, big dig Boston kind of thing. I feel like the momentum you could get from decking I-5 would be enormous to furthering all of these interests in all these smaller projects along the waterfront. And as everyone says, like, the waterfront is pretty much a major source of pride and energy for the city, and hopefully we can find some political and financial will to kind of make this happen in the long term. And also, one other idea I'd heard about that would also bring attention to this whole area is turning the rail yards into the West Coast Smithsonian. So I don't know if that's been on anyone's radar, but that'd be pretty cool to have something out here to kind of honor our history because we have a lot of it. But anyway, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Joe Rodato, then Mike Testa.
Mayor, members of the city council, with me is Ray Truthway, the executive director of the Sacramento Tree Foundation. I'm here as a member and co-founder of Sakura Mento, which is a volunteer organization that celebrates the connection between Sacramento and its Japanese heritage and the nation of Japan through food, community, and the arts. And I'm also a member of the Capitol Committee for Sacramento Tree Foundation's campaign to build a new destination just north of the Sacramento, Old Town Sacramento, called the Hanami Line at Robert Matsui Park. And here to applaud and embrace this proposal and also to raise attention to a little bit of geography just north of Old Town that could use a little love as well. This site was selected about four years ago by committee that included Lon Hatahimea and Councilmember Hanson. And it was part of a vision of, we share with the council and with Richard and the team, of embracing the river and not fearing it and creating a series of new destinations along the waterfront. And what we're envisioning here is a park that celebrates Sacramento's connection to its Japanese history and to Japan, and also provides a venue for celebrating the opening of spring and the blooming of the cherry blossoms, which will be happening across the river. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's a great project, and maybe all of what we're doing here in the creation of this Destination Fund can help. Good.
Next speaker is Mike Testa, then Akash Lal.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the city council. Mr. City Manager, my name is Mike Testa. I'm the president and CEO for Visit Sacramento. I'm here tonight to express Visit Sacramento's support for investing TOT revenues to transform the Old Sacramento waterfront into a dynamic and vibrant visitor attraction. Without question, Old Sacramento is one of our largest draws for leisure travel in the region. We are excited that you've made the district a priority and that you're giving it the intention that it deserves. It's been said tonight, but I'm compelled to say it again. As a practice, Visit Sacramento's Board of Director believes that whenever TOT funds are invested in a project, that project should inherently drive new TOT to replenish the funding source so that we can collectively convene future projects. We are confident that you all share that priority. We look forward to working with council and staff to play a role in creating a district that entertains our residents while drawing visitors, and we applaud your vision in working to attract outside tourist dollars into our regional economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I just want to add, I want to make sure that Richard and Michael Jasser, that we're working very closely with Visit Sacramento to maximize the tourism benefits of the plan here along the waterfront. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next speaker is Akash Lal, then Keon Morton, then Kimberly Garza.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to be heard tonight. My name is Akash Lal. I'm a local developer here in Sacramento, and I'm extremely excited about the news that we are talking about today. I was raised here in Sacramento, and I'm forever Sacramento proud. To show our commitment to Old Sacramento, we've invested over $3.5 million in the Union Hotel located right in the heart of Old Sac, on Second and K, just four months ago. This is our company's largest single investment. We are all in and need you to be all in as well. We need attractions not only to attract tourists, but locals who deserve to enjoy our city. We need to connect West Sac to Old Sac to the arena to Midtown. When people think of Old Sacramento, they're thinking of just candy stores and jewelry We have worked extremely hard to lead by example and change Old Sacramento, starting with our building, by putting in a miniature golf course in the basement, an exclusive bourbon lounge that's coming soon, and a boutique hotel on the top floor. Old Sacramento is a regional asset that has the opportunity to put us on the map nationally. There are incredible places all around the nation that have a setting very similar to ours, as we've discussed today. We need all of these funds to turn this vision to a reality. This tremendous opportunity creates jobs, revenues for the city, increases tourism, opportunities to enjoy music and art, and most of all, get our kids off the iPad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Keon Morton and Kimberly Garza.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Keon Morton, Sacramento Metro Chamber. Hey, first of all, we're fully supportive of the investment and development of the Old Sacramento waterfront to really drive our destination. Marketing is a more vibrant community for the capital region and is a catalyst for business. And as you've heard from multiple speakers, we really need to embrace our place as a river city and not behind the levees or behind the freeways. For too long, we've not made the most of this unique location as a confluence of rivers that has defined our indomitable city long ago. The projects, as we look at them, need to be big and catalytic in design. As you've heard that, we need to dream big, and that's why we're supporting this. Secondly, though, what it really also goes down to us is strong business. And for us in the Metro Chamber, that means execution. Because as you've heard, over the years, over the decades, there've been multiple starts, multiple projects, multiple ideas. We want to make sure that we are, you know, committed as a partner as you potentially move forward with this, to make sure that the ideas that come forward, that have been proposed in concept, go through feasibility and then actually get built. Lastly, we just want to make sure as a Metro Chamber that we're mindful of the future. And as we advocate for large investments, we're also supportive of this because we feel that this idea, this proposal, I should say, is reflective of the fact that, you know, other things can be done in the future once this project gets off the ground. So with that, thank you very much.
Kimberly Garza, then Brian Curley, then Michael Coyne.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kimberly Garza. I'm a resident of Sacramento, landscape architect, chapter president of the local American Society of Landscape Architects, and I'm representing Atlas Lab, one of the firms, a professional, local, local, and professional design teams that submitted for the waterfront idea makers. I would like to show my complete support for fully funding the work that Richard Rich and his team have done to help lay out the next steps to make the waterfront a, just an amazing destination for Sacramento and for the region. My intimate experience with public waterfront improvement projects such as this have proven that only do these projects have tremendous economic return on investment, but importantly, the equitable and social returns they provide are unparalleled and invaluable. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Brian Curley, then Michael Coyne.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Brian Curley. I am a resident of District 4 in Lamb Park. I am a local architect and representing Stan Tech, the Urban Place Team, our local office that also proposed on the idea makers competition. First and foremost, I would like to say, thank Richard and his team for all of their efforts in putting this together. When we look at this, this is a fantastic opportunity and finally, an ideas competition where it doesn't end at only ideas on paper, but moves forward. And tonight's a very important point in Sacramento's history to keep this moving, not just for Sacramento itself, but our region. And when we look at this, it's fascinating to see that between the Capitol Park and Old Sacramento, these are two of our most populated areas as far as tourists. Yet, Old Sacramento tourists are maybe there for two hours and then gone. So we do have the opportunity not only to provide for additional tourists from outside of Sacramento, but tourists that are within the region and reinvesting within their region, people that are proud to take place and participate on the waterfront. If I leave you with one thing, it's this. Think of a single office worker supporting a half a square foot of retail. Think of one resident as supporting 10 square feet of retail. There's less than 100 residents within Old Sacramento, whether they are there as a permanent resident or overnight visitor and hotel. Now imagine with the opportunity sites, what we can imagine in additional funding and tax revenue for this area. So we thank you, and we're in full support of this measure.
Thank you so much.
Michael Coyne, then Stephen Zale, then Travis Holti.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, and Mr. City Manager, my name is Michael Coyne. I am with the Riverboat Delta King. My family brought the boat back 30 years ago. In fact, we're celebrating our 30th year this year. As we have discussed over the many years with the various merchants, city council, and stakeholders, over the years, we talk about Old Sacramento, and everybody has always said, God, it's really got great potential. But we've always had difficulty realizing that potential. And I think this is an opportunity that is being spearheaded by you, Mr. Mayor, and the city council to really bring Old Sacramento to the forefront, to bring to fruition the potential that Old Sacramento has to benefit all of Sacramento and the whole region. So clearly, and I haven't heard a lot of opposition yet, so I think your path is clear, that we move forward, you move forward on this and make a big statement as to the region, Old Sacramento, and the Old Sacramento waterfront. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming and for your investment in Old Sac. Appreciate it.
I have four more speakers. Stephen Zale, Travis Holti, William Taylor, and then Louis Morante.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Mr. City Manager. My name is Steve Zale, and over the past four years, I have had intimate involvement in Old Sacramento. The first is with California State Parks. I was privileged to be the leader of their transformation project, transforming the entire California State Parks operation. One of our huge initiatives was partnerships. And if this isn't the greatest partnership, I can visualize, you know, I'm not sure what is. But between the private owners, the state of California through Old Sacramento and the city, the operational partnership discussions that have been going on will be wonderful. Will wind up really benefiting Old Sacramento. Second, I am a board member of the California State Railroad Museum Foundation, and you heard from Cheryl a little while ago. Third, I'm a docent at the Railroad Museum. That's probably the most important. In all three of those roles, I want to urge your support of this project. I think it is a long time coming. We should all get on board. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Travis Holti, then William Taylor.
I am a state employee and a resident of Sacramento, and I want to fully endorse and support this program. This is fantastic. But you've heard that from every single person who has come up here tonight. So I want to focus on something else, and that is ambition. I think this is a great step. I think 44 million is a huge step in the right direction. But that 1.5 billion that Caltrans is going to be using, I think, represents an even greater opportunity. And so I would really encourage all of you to start building that momentum that you talked about, Mayor, to really use this as the first step in a longer process to transform Sacramento and really harness the potential that it can have. So as other people have stated, I would recommend just really starting to work on this now, directing staff to start planning ahead and to make the most of this opportunity and picture it as just a first step. And thank you very much.
William Taylor, and then Louis Morante.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. I'm William Taylor. I know most of you either through Willie's or Iron Grill that I own. And I have passing acquaintance with a guy named Alonso Jennings. And I think Alonso played a Sac high. And I was a wide receiver, he was the outside linebacker, and we had a lot of run-ins. Broke my helmet. But I came tonight to support the mayor and those other council members like Steve, who have really supported this waterfront effort. You guys have picked a tremendous guy with Rich Rich to lead this. He's a good listener. He's a good analyst. He has put together a great program. And I'm a firm believer, I'm a business guy, I'm a firm believer that you do good business before you do good, because otherwise, there's no way to pay for the good you want to do. And in that vein, I own the trolley that he talked about. I believe that one of the major events down in Old Sacramento has been the parking issue. And when my son decided to open a Willie's down in Old Sacramento, the first thing I talked to him about was, gee, where are you going to get the people? How are you going to get people down there? And rather than discourage him, I said, you know, what we really need is something like those old elephant trains that used to go around the old, like back before a lot of your times. But back in the old days, there was a big parking lot on Broadway across from the fairgrounds. And there were these elephant trains that went around and picked people up and dropped them off, and then inside, there were more elephant trains that took people around. I said, we need something like that. And that was the start of a process where we looked around, we found the trolley, and they're not street legal, or they weren't street legal. We imported one, put parts together, we re-engineered it so it was street legal. And, you know, we're now in the process.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment? Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment?
Yeah, that's, you know, I just want to tell you that I support this 100%. I think you guys have done a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Thank you for believing in your investment in Sacramento.
And we open a partner review and make it work, so.
Thank you.
And our final speaker is Louis Morante.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Louis Morante. I am here tonight in a personal capacity, but I am the Legislative Director for California MB, a board member of our local MB organization, and a former board member of the Midtown Neighborhood Association. Tonight, here to support relooking at the, to support this proposal, to relook at the waterfront. I joined my comments to Craig's and to Lilly's earlier and really encouraged council to direct staff to look at removing I-5 completely. There are different ways to approach I-5, but I think removing it completely from the center of the city and replacing it with a more person-scale street, you know, two or four-lane street, is consistent with what has been successful in other cities. In California, San Francisco most notably removed a freeway and increased property values in that area by billions of dollars, resulting in significant increases in local government revenue. Sacramento could choose a same future for itself. The current highway very much cuts off Midtown and Downtown from its history, from the reason that Sacramento exists, which is that waterfront. And removing the highway completely would make land available that the city could then sell to developers for much-needed housing in this area or to create jobs by locating businesses there. And the city could use that money to fund then affordable housing near Downtown, near the river, in places where we need it the most. So I'd really encourage the city to look at fully removing I-5 from Downtown. It's not needed. Other cities, Austin, San Francisco, have led the way in this regard in terms of freeway removal and making those transportation assets more person-scale. And it's consistent with what the city's already doing in terms of the streetcar. So thanks again for taking a look at this important measure and urge your support tonight. So, thanks again for taking a look at this important measure and urge your support tonight.
Thank you for coming.
No more speakers.
Very good. That is the public testimony. Thank you all very much for coming tonight. And let's turn it over to the city council. I'm going to begin with the district council member where this resides, Councilmember Hanson. And thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. And we've all been here since 2:00 in constant hearing, so I'll be as brief as everybody will allow me to be. But I would just say that Old Sacramento only exists because JFK intervened in the freeway plowing through it. And now, we have a different leader here in Mayor Steinberg, who wants to reinvest in it. It's not lost on me that if you go to the Sacramento History Museum, you see Governor Reagan at the time, celebrating the revival of Old Sacramento, and it's probably been since that time that we've had this type of investment. And so, that is a long time. But before he even took office, Mayor Steinberg in October of 2016 called and said, "We've got to do this. We've got to create this fund. Got to stop this big convention center project and fix it." We ended up with a better project there, and that allows us to do this. Richard, Marco, Ellen, you've done a tremendous amount of work, and I'm grateful. I think Summer, you probably have an internship in your future in economic development. And Richard, hopefully, you need somebody over this summer, that could be Summer, to help you do this. I just, there are a couple of quick things. The Treasurer covered some of it, but the naming rights money isn't restricted by TOT, and there may be some other revenues that come into the C-3 project. So, as we move forward, the extent to which we can swap in non-TOT funds and have a little more flexibility, I'd like to do that, rather than putting them into the convention center project, so that we, as projects come up, we have a little bit more flexibility, because TOT is very limited, and we don't have to get into that. But I saw that in the Treasurer's slide, and it reminded me.
Can I say something?
Only if it's a must say, just because everybody wants to leave.
Well, I just want to tell you that the TOT, having naming rights adds about $10 million to our project, because as you remember, in October, we put a safeguard of $8 million in the community center fund. So, that enables us, there's a pinch point in like 34 or 35 where we come close to that $8 million.
Oh.
So, that $800 to $1 million enables us to...
You need the TOT, the non-TOT money in?
I need the naming rights to make sure I don't breach the $8 million. This gives us more capacity.
All right.
Because from a...
I don't need you to do it, but if it looks like that's smarter, that's something we should consider. Richard, you've done a tremendous job, and you know that I care immensely about Old Sacramento. But I also know that we're looking at this very narrow slice between the Tower Bridge and the Railroad Museum. I think that several people spoke about a greater opportunity area. And I'd like, I'm going to, I'll just make a motion in a second, but I see this as sort of from the Crocker Auto Museum to the Powerhouse Science Center. And there may be opportunities that fall out of, outside of the narrow window that you're suggesting those six projects for. And it's unusual that we set aside money before we vetted projects. I think that's prudent here, and it's really smart to work on those. But I think other opportunities may come up, like the Hanami Line, or potentially something else that is equally beneficial and can catalyze within the budgets that we've set aside, because you've shown $39 million, but we may have $47 million. And I think there's flexibility in there to have an opportunity bucket. And so, that's something that I care about. The other thing, and I'll just, I'll make a motion to approve the second resolution, which is the full funding of this project. But I want, as part of that, us to look at this opportunity bucket and set aside, you know, the funds that are appropriate for that, and we don't have to dicker about it now. But if it's $8 million that you haven't yet claimed for those six projects, then let it be that. But I think we need to try to inspire some of those things that are south of MB C-Suites or north of the Railroad Museum to happen. And this gives us a tool to provide matching funds and to catalyze them. That's number one. Secondly, connectivity. You know, you talked about lighting and stuff like that, but I would, I want as part of this motion, Public Works, to look at a connection north out of Old Sacramento. Once the I Street bridge ramps come down, if you look at this on Google Maps, the bridge ramps now at the north of the Railroad Museum cut off that whole part of the waterfront, and it's essentially abandoned now. But we'll have the opportunity with the new bridge to pull that into Old Sacramento. And I think we haven't done the planning through Public Works, Mr. City Manager, to do that. Also, we'll get capacity to potentially connect J Street through Old Sacramento to Third from Second, and allow people to get out that way, too. And right now, that J Street intersection, if you're a pedestrian, is really messy. But getting in and out of Old Sacramento is really hard, and we need to, we need to figure that out. As a piece of it, the freeway side, there's a lot of conversation about the freeway. I don't think we can resolve that now. If we could get rid of I-5, I'd do it in a heartbeat. If we had the funds to cap I-5, I would do it in a heartbeat. Those aren't currently feasible, but when you drive on the freeway, you see the Old Sacramento buildings that face the freeway, and they're forgotten, they're rundown. It sends a message to the people driving by that this is not a place you want to go. When you get into Old Sacramento, it looks different, but if you're not going to get off the freeway and you don't know what's there, it's really, it looks unkempt, it looks like it's falling apart. And that's just from that freeway side, and I think we can make that better. The two last things as part of this, that was more editorial, but as you think about lighting and view, I'd like you to look at that. The return on investment for those projects that we would be funding, when you bring them back, show us that. You know, some might be nice visitor amenities, but some might be visitor attractions that actually generate TOT. And I think it'll be important to follow up on the Kaiser Marsen stuff, to really show what the value of those projects could be. When we did Powerhouse Science Center, Mayor, we did a full economic analysis that showed the TOT benefit. And I'm not necessarily asking for that on a more minor project, because that was 50 million bucks. But I think it's helpful to think in that mindset. And then finally, there's a lot of discussion about hotel development. I know as part of the C-3 project, we were hoping a convention center hotel would come. I think that there's land in Old Sacramento that you could see hotel development on, and we have other properties that could help with that lift. We do not have a policy related to incentivizing hotel creation, and I would like the staff to work on that policy, so that we can evaluate hotel proposals effectively, because we will have to work in the same sandbox for those. But ultimately, the mayor, and Darrell, if I can...
You can.
I think that this would never have happened without your leadership, your persistence, and frankly, just the wisdom it took to see that we needed to restructure the convention center project. We could deliver a better project through that, which we have, partnering with the hotels to create the STID, and being able to come back and do this. It's something that you never gave up on. There were a lot of daunting moments, and I think we have to admire the slings and arrows that you have persevered through to get to this Destination Sacramento Fund, and I think you really deserve a lot of credit.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you. Thank you so much.
So, I know that was a bit of a complicated motion, but I can restate it if necessary. But basically, we're doing what you all want, plus a little bit of deeper thinking.
MB, thank you so much. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm of two minds on this. First of all, obviously, I'm extraordinarily proud of Summer. It doesn't really take words, just you saw her, she's an amazing young woman. But I would like to just say a couple of things about her. First of all, I think she was about nine years old the first time she walked into these council chambers and spoke to this council about trying to save a team that she really liked to go watch with her grandparents and her family, and a lot of her family is here today. And she was eloquent then, and she is amazing now. So, she came, Mayor, when you asked last time, you put out a call in the paper, and you said, "We need your ideas, Sacramento." And Summer showed up with her grandma, and she had an idea about history and water along that waterfront. And the real way that that story went was that because Summer was known to the media through Crown Downtown, that story was picked up. And I got called a couple of times about Summer, because I made statements about her being one of my favorite little constituents. And we did some media together. And then WET, this international company, saw that media, and they liked Summer's idea. They actually came up here and met with Summer and I several times before we sent them to city staff, because we weren't so sure. We wanted to figure out if we could trust them with her intellectual properties. And so, we had some meetings. And then we, the city, sent Summer down to spend some time with them. And she's a very dedicated student. She's a straight A in the tough programs at Endrochem, and an student athlete, and very involved in the Youth Advisory Committee. So, she would only go on a day off of school. She didn't want to miss class for it. And she came up with these designs with them. And then they came back and put them together, and Summer has given this presentation a few times to a few different folks. And I think her idea is brilliant. By the way, she is not for hire. I clearly have, you all underestimate me, I've obviously already hired her. So, if you would like to see her or consult her, you may visit her during her summer break while she's interning in my office. Richard, that's where she will be when you need her later. She will be helping us, and soon, hopefully, sitting here, running the city, because she has a lot of energy and great ideas, and she's really smart. So, and I love the idea of supporting her. There are six projects recommended. I clearly have a favorite. And in true fashion, she also is coming in under budget with a big idea that I think is worth exploring. And Summer, you deserve so much credit for this. It's all you. You did it. You did this. That's my first comment, and I'm happy to support the motion tonight, because I think this is an important thing to do. And I love Old Sac. I got to represent it for a little bit of time, too, and I knew, I know lots of the players who are in the room tonight, and they deserve this investment and they need it. And Old Sacramento is a place that we all go. And I think this is a good and creative way to do it, and credit goes to you, Mayor, and Councilmember Hanson, because you both really worked hard to get that cost down on the convention center to create this opportunity. And it's very, very good. I think it's very good. I agree, decking, if Mayor Fargo were here, she's told me so many times that we need to deck that I-5. That's where that drawing comes from, by the way. She had that drawing done, and then just tried to find money and couldn't. But, you know, if ever there's a day that we can do that, I think it's worth looking at also. It's an interesting concept, and her design drawing is good, and I'm sure it could be improved even now. So, I will definitely support the motion. There's a second piece to this, though, that I'm really frustrated about. And I'm trying not to let it weigh me down in my support of your effort here with this Destination Sacramento Fund, and Councilmember Hanson and his great work, and both of you with your great work, and of course, Summer's fantastic work. So, you will have my vote. However, this is the third time we've discussed this at council. And the last two times we discussed it at council, I ad nauseam talked about the need for a funding source for designated reuse for the arena site. And it is appropriate that so many people from Crown Downtown are here, because they've been very instrumental in supporting the notion of a reuse for the arena site. And we talked a lot about the role that TOT could play in that, specific to new TOT in North Natomas. And the last time that we discussed this item, which was September 25th, Councilmember Hanson made a motion with a date certain that we would come back and have the discussion that we're having tonight, the second Tuesday of January. So, we're a smidge bit behind. That didn't happen. It was never scheduled, but that's the date that we all voted unanimously to come back, date certain, and have this conversation. And Mayor, I know that frustrates you, too, because you've been trying to get this on a darn agenda for months. In fact, your comments in here say you didn't want to wait till January. Your comments were, can we get this going, you know, in November? So, but unanimously, this council agreed to a motion that Councilmember Hanson made to bring this item back and vote on it, which is exactly what we're doing tonight. But his motion also included a request that the TOT for Natomas come back with a vote. That night, the mayor issued his unwavering support of that proposal and asked this council if anyone objected. Councilmember Carr had a couple of good questions, and that was it. Jay Sheneer said he was supportive. Steve and Jeff both said they were supportive. I had my staff transcribe your words today, so that I wouldn't misquote you or say something wrong. Eric and Allen were absent, but everybody else was supportive. And yet, Natomas is not on here today, and it's not on your follow-up log. And so, no staff person here who's heard this entire council unanimously say aye, put that down to move forward, ever. So, I'm frustrated, because I feel like I've now, this is the third time that I'm asking for this to come to council, and the third time that the other projects, along with TOT, are moving forward without it. So, Mayor, maybe there's like some magic that word I haven't said that I need to say...
There isn't.
I'm not sure how many unanimous votes we need, but whatever it is, I need somebody to explain it to me. Because I heard Michael Jaso sort of mentioned Tomas in his comments, and John mentioned Natomas in their comments, but really, that's not good enough, because a promise was made, and then reiterated, and then reiterated again, and we're still here.
Can I try to help, try to help here? So, yes, here's what, as I remember the discussion, you made a very strong point that for new hotels in your district, in Natomas, new hotels, that the TOT generated from there should be, should stay in Natomas, for arena reuse destination project, whatever it might be. And I agree. I think that's fair. And the fact that it has not been agendized yet is not right. So, let's leave here tonight with a reiteration of that commitment, but also, let's, I'm happy to work with you to actually set, and the city manager, to actually set an agenda date, okay? It's the best I can do.
Yeah. But you see my frustration, though, right? Because Steve did that last time, and got a unanimous vote with a date, and it didn't come back. So, I guess, you know, I'm trying to figure out what it takes for me to get the same thing that you all get when we get a unanimous vote on something.
I wasn't involved, I wasn't involved in the date discussion subsequent, for right or wrong.
No, we all, oh, maybe not subsequently, but there shouldn't have needed to be any subsequent work from any of us, because the council voted unanimously for it. So, I understand, you know, leaving here, it's late, we're all tired. I'm tired, too. We haven't, this council hasn't even taken a break to eat, so we're all hangry and tired. And that's never a good combination. But at the same time, I'm not, I can't walk away without getting North Natomas the funding they need for the reuse of an arena that this council promised. And quite frankly, this council agreed to and said, "Fine, let's bring it back for the official vote and talk about what it looks like." I have asked our Treasurer multiple times how that interplays with this, and he has indicated to me, at least as recently as last night, that the two are not mutually exclusive. This should be able to move forward in full, we should be able to support B, which is the portion that you're putting forward, and still be able to separate out the North Natomas, new hotels, not the existing ones that are included in this. I fear if something will happen, more will be spent, and that money will be gone. You heard several speakers tonight talk about Miller Park and other projects that were sitting right where we are now, and then the funding just never came. So, I can't, I can't allow that to happen. It's too big of a promise, too big of a deal. By the way, codified in with the Golden One Center deal. So, I appreciate your support, but I think we need like the city manager, and the Treasurer, and Michael Jaso, and the city attorney to actually put it on agenda and bring it back, so that we can put it away. You asked them to do it last time.
Okay. I'm asking again.
Yeah, me, too. Me, too.
Okay. Thank you. Any other members? I'm going to be very brief here then in conclusion, because it's, I just, many thank yous, I mean, huge kudos. Thank you, Councilmember Hanson, again, for partnering with me over these couple of years through this circuitous process. You know, everyone who worked at the convention center, Community Center Theater, Fran and her team, and is retired now, but then Richard, Rich, and your team, Ellen and Marco, I mean, there's only one word for me, it's wow. I mean, the work product here. I always said, "I'm not the design guy, I'm just the money guy." You brought forward something fabulous. John Colville, creative as heck, even if your tie was crooked tonight.
But he had one on.
He had one on. Creative as can be in figuring out how we free up this money. State parks, the Downtown Partnership, all represented here tonight, Michael and your team, Mike Testin, the Visit Sac team, my team, Kelly Scott, my entire team that worked so hard... so hard on this issue. I want to make sure that we, you know, if the Hanami Line can get done, as Steve has suggested. Mayor Fargo has also mentioned me, and I got to say it publicly, that we promised to reopen the fountain in the water intake facility. Well, okay, so I'm putting, do it if we can do it. And so, so this is, I just, there's two things that just struck me, that I just think have got to be repeated. One was Janey, I was in what you said, when all the people have come to Old Sacramento from out of town, and they ask this question, where is the river? Tonight, we found it! At least we began to find it. The other one that struck me was Kip Blewett, who said, you put this public investment in, I'm looking as a private investor and developer, again, in Old Sacramento. And that's the dynamic piece of this. We put forward the capital, the private capital will come as well. This is a fantastic night, this is the fun stuff, I urge you and I vote. There's a motion, is there a second on the motion?
Ask Ashby.
Okay, she made a second. All in favor of, and remember, it's Resolution B here, it's Resolution B. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstain. That is a seven to nothing vote, with two absent. If there's nothing further to come before the City Council on this special meeting, we are adjourned. Thank you. (applause)[1745.84]